Okay, it is nine o'clock. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Trinity County Board Supervisor on June 4, 2019. It is the fourth of April. Okay. Supervisor Brown, you lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the great work which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, this time is for information for the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. All right, anyone? All right.
My name is Jim Stillwell. I'm out of Haverhill, California. Addressing the board as a whole, you took an oath when you took office for the position that you're holding to uphold and defend the Constitution of United States and California. You're lacking. You had John Jelisich do a LAFCO deal to put a business before you that was never finished and lied to you, purged himself before you, and never sent out letters to the property owners involved in this hospital tax that you got, the one that was voted down by the whole county. And in the Constitution that states that the whole county has to be a part of the determination whether or not that hospital's going to be covered by taxes or not. They would never notify how much it was going to be, how long it was going to be for, or where the money was going. There was nothing done of that. I'd like to get this put on the agenda and be notified at the time and date that it's put on the agenda so I can attend it. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Ma'am, you have a request for an agenda item to be agendized. Not quite sure what it is, but please consider or ask the board to consider. Thank you.
Actually, it's either, you know, I could talk to counsel off-line. It's either a LAFCO item or...
I'm not entirely sure what that request is.
So we'll look into it some more.
Great, thank you.
That's as much, okay.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, moving on to item 1.1, presentation under transportation. Receive a presentation from Caltrans project manager Clint Birkenpotts regarding projects for 2019 constructed season with specific information for Trinity County. Good morning, Keith. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Again, I'm Clint Birkenpotts from Caltrans, a project manager for Trinity County Projects. I want to talk to you today about a couple of things, like our two projects that we're working together on with Trinity County that you have some funds involved in, Tom Bell Road and Denny Lane, and then also talk about what we have going in construction this season in Trinity County. So we'll start with our current construction projects, and then if there's any question about future projects, we can talk about those. On the map you see is, and there's some copies in the back if anybody wants one, in orange are the projects that are going, that should be in construction this summer or are currently in construction. The blue ones are projects that are in design, and the green ones are projects that are further behind in the process, are just getting through planning and being developed in projects. I do want to talk about the projects actively in construction or that soon will be. This winter was a pretty tough winter for us here in Trinity County. We did have quite a few slides, so there's, I believe, four projects going. There's two further down, down the river on 299. Now, there's two projects going there, some fairly large slides that we're dealing with and removing material and stabilizing those slides. So those would be the heli slide and the power slide. I have seven and eight on the map there. And then also two slides occurred on, one slide and one slip-out. A slip-out, although we once, in the way we speak, slip-outs below the road, a slide's above the road. So we did have a slide above the road near Forest Glen, and then also another slip-out near, near Gubacalla Mountain. And those are underway. Those are going well. We're removing the material out there as quick as we can and trying to get traffic through there to minimize delays. So those should be wrapping up just hopefully fairly early in the summer, and then those will be opened back up. We do have a curb improvement we talked on. We're calling the ditch gulch curb improvement. This is on Trinity 36. This is item five on the map. This is west of the 336 intersection. That'll be a nice improvement there. We'll increase the radius of that curve, make it a little bit smoother, and try to handle some icing issues that we have in there as well. The other, we do have some culvert work that's going on on Trinity 3 north of Bayport. And then another project that we're pretty happy to lift is the paved cane control for worker safety for Caltrans workers. There are several locations that currently they can't get off the road to turn cane control signs and do those sorts of things, so we're paving some of those locations so they can do that. And also, we're putting in some changeable message signs so we can get better information out to the traveling public during snowstorms and other events. Finally, I want to talk about some work that does affect Trinity County, but it more so affects your community and to writing if anybody has over that way for any reason. We are wrapping up work on the restoration work from the car fire. The final items of work, there's a little bit of drainage work that remains to be done, and we're cleaning up the two slides that occurred over the winter. That's pretty close to being done as well. Right on the pills of that, if you drive through now, you'll get, you'll be delayed for probably about 15 or 20 minutes. You're going through what we're calling the dry whiskey project. This is not on your map. And that's a pavement maintenance project. It's about 11 miles long after you get down to the bottom of Buckhorn grade. And that's, that's going this, this summer right now. They'll remove, they'll remove a couple inches of AC and put down a layer that's going to absorb stresses and put the two inches of AC back. So you'll see that that'll progress pretty quickly and be done by the end of the summer.
So you said by the end of summer?
Yes.
And the car fire project is almost wrapped up?
It's almost wrapped up. We're anticipating that being wrapped up by the end of June.
Okay, and then I've mentioned this before, and I mentioned it to Dave recently, that anything you guys can do to kind of short that construction around peak holiday travel time? You know, lakes are full. It's an opportunity for people to kind of recover from the last fire season, so if they can wrap up before 4th of July for a break?
The good, the good thing about this type of project, it is, it is one we can, we can wrap up, they'll easily wrap up two, a day or two before the holiday and go and get the road fully opened. A lot of what we were doing on Buckhorn, we weren't able to do that, and there was no, nowhere to put the road because we were on a new alignment. This is just grinding out the pavement and putting it back, so we do have that opportunity to get the roads open back up. So you should see, see that the holidays are free and clear.
Also, I've had resort owners ask me if there's any way that you guys can do like half-days on Fridays, on every Fridays, just so when people are coming out.
Sure. We're generally off the road by, the general requirement is to be off the road by 3:00, 3:00 PM on a Friday. Is that...
I think that's, I think they would like a little longer, but I think that's better than your...
It's a little more difficult with the slide removal projects, so those are our top priority, get them, get the road protected and the traveling public safe. So they do tend to work more through weekends on projects like that. But our run-of-the-mill projects, our planned projects, we are off the road, supposed to be off the road by Friday in general.
I will pass that along.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions on any of the upcoming projects or anything? Let's see.
Thanks for taking out that two mile an hour curve on the 36 right after the 3, or you're working on that.
Right, working on that one, so.
I always take it at three miles an hour.
Well, it won't be a 55 mile an hour curve, but it will be better. I do want to talk specifically then about two projects that we're partnering with Trinity County on. I'm pretty excited about those. Those pulled up. Okay, we'll talk about Tom Bell Road first. This is just north of Weaverville here on Highway 3, right by the airport. We're installing, working with Trinity County to install a left turn lane onto Tom Bell Road and also extend a two-way left turn lane between that turn lane that we're constructing and the Fisengulch Land Gulch Road. So that is currently underway. We're wrapping up the environmental phase. In fact, I have the project report under my chair here. I'm going to get one more signature on it, and we will be moving into the final design of that. That should be in construction next summer. It's progressing nicely. We're staying well within our budget. Trinity County is providing approximately $700,000 towards that out of the STIP funds, the Surface Transportation Improvement Funds, and Caltrans is paying about 2/3 of the bills, so about 1.4 million. So that was going well. I am a little bit late with the project report, but it's systematic. Any questions on Tom Bell?
No, I just hope you're going to join us at the groundbreaking today. Because that...
Not at the pro.
Not at the pro. It'd be scary. But that does have an impact to our jail. So you're welcome to join us, and we would certainly want you to join us if you could. 11:00. 11:00. I mean, truly, it's a nice partnership for companies.
We can't do this without a left turn lane, so come on.
Thank you.
Right, and we are working diligently to get that open before the facility is open. So we've made that a pretty high priority, and we're doing everything we can to make sure it's going to be ready for use for the facility.
Thank you.
The other, oh, I do want to mention too, I did have a typo on, it says extended as of December 28th on both of these reports. That's not correct. It's more like May, the end of May. I don't know the exact date, but this data is only about two or three weeks old. It's not, I mean, six months in the rear, so sorry about that. This is the Denny Road left turn lane. This would be a left turn lane for eastbound traffic on Highway 299 to turn on, to head into Denny. This is proceeding well. It's about a year behind the Tom Bell Road in schedule, so it should be in construction in the 2021, summer 2021. So this one's progressing nicely. A very similar arrangement, Trinity County is providing about $800,000 from local Speed 1 funding, and then Caltrans is hoping about 2/3 of that bill, about 1.4 million.
Can you super anybody a question?
Yes.
Have you guys already been in communication with the landowner just to the south of the project? Are you going to be cutting into the trees and the hillside there?
We will be. I believe that most of that falls within our existing right-of-way lines, and we start the formal consultation with the landowners when we get moved from the environmental phase into the final design. We do need to have our environmental document completed before we can start approaching them and talking about...
Means that'll be about 10 months out or something like that?
Yes, we're hoping to wrap that environmental document up in, by December of this year, and we'll begin talking to the landowners.
Thank you.
So anyway, that one's proceeding nicely. I have the same project engineer on both of these projects. He's doing a great job, so I guess you'll get really nice, some really nice improvements on these projects.
Questions? No? Questions from the public? No? All right. Good to see you. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Let's call on yourself.
Yeah. Thank you, bud. All right, moving on to consent agenda. These items include routine non-controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by a one-rule motion. A member of the board's staff or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Board members, any items?
Yes, 214 and 216.
All right. Members of the public, anyone who wishes to pull an item? Make sure you get them right.
I'd like to pull 213, 218, and 226.
All right. Anyone else? All right, would entertain a motion?
I would accept the agenda. Are you against the agenda?
Second.
All right. Supervisor DeMoyne?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Shallow?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes, thank you. All right. Moving on to 2.13. Pretty regular meetings minutes, but may find first as submitted by a deputy clerk with fiscal impact.
Any questions, Kate?
Kate Grace from Loweston. I would like to know why the minutes of meeting have changed. When you have them online, you have them separated out now as the legal minutes, but you no longer include the material that went with the minutes and can actually retrofit the agenda with things that you were given during the meeting. I don't see how that's legal. It's certainly not informative to the public. The minutes are practically useless the way they are now, and I don't know why you changed it this year. I think the last time you added the documents to it was in December 2018, but you no longer do that, and I would like to know why. And I had also specifically requested that a document I gave you, a letter about the grand jury report, be included with the record in the minutes, and it wasn't. You retrofitted to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll look into it. All right, item 2.14. Approve the revised bylaws of the Trinity County Fishing Game Advisory Commission. This is your item, so if you... Thank you. So item 2.13, we do need to move this along, this item. Would entertain a motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. It's approved. Thank you. Thank you for catching that. All right, 2.14. Approve the revised bylaws of the Trinity County Fishing Game Advisory Commission. No fiscal impact.
I apologize for not getting time to talk to the supervisor and the others before. In the bylaws, it doesn't mention a supervisor being on the board. We had, you know, he's appointed supervisor to the board. Is there something I'm not seeing that is required?
Absolutely not, and I have no reason why.
Okay.
It's all, it's just been done in the past. It's carried on. And actually, these bylaws that you're looking at today, I don't think they actually need approval. They've already been approved.
Just clarification?
No.
No?
They've already been approved. We approved them about a year, year and a half ago. Great. And they're coming back up again for some reason.
Well, the backup said something about that they were unclear which was passed, so...
And that was, that's true. There is some, a lack of clarity as to which ones were passed and which one. But, but actually, when I go back and look at it, the ones that are in the minutes and the ones that were approved are identical to what team it is taking care of. So this is kind of a moot thing. I do not know whether we're required by state code to have a fishing game advisory board or whether there's supposed to be a supervisor upon it. I haven't looked at, I've been curious about it myself, and I haven't looked at it.
I have. I'm supportive of keeping it, and I'm supportive of having a supervisor on it. I just don't know if we should have the bylaws changed. I reflect that. I have no issue with this. I just...
Maybe, maybe CIO can, or I'm sorry, the chair of the fishing board, fishing game advisory board can take a look through the state code to see if we're even required to have this or to have representative from the board on it.
And I'd like counsel review. Should we table this then?
I'm not interested in tabling it. I'm fine with this and getting clarity. It's just that this came up, and I just didn't know that history.
And I'd be in agreement with Keith to keep somebody from the board on it.
Yeah, me too. So we'll...
I'll make the motion to approve as presented.
Yep. Hold, hold tight. So we're going to move forward with this, but we'll have those items looked into. And any questions from the public on this? No? Okay, we'll bring it back.
Motion to approve as presented.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anyone opposed? So moved. All right, 2.16.
Chair, I will recuse up this item.
All right, item 2.16. Find no objections to the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to the Weaverville Lions Club to serve alcoholic beverages at their festival to be held at Loudoun Park in Weaverville, California, July 3 through the 7, 2019. No fiscal impact. All right, board members, questions on this? Members of the public? No? Or I'll bring it back. Would entertain a motion?
So moved as presented.
Thank you.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved, thank you. 2.18 was yours, Kate?
Yes.
All right, item 2.18. Approve an agreement with the California Department of General Services to provide matching funds for the replacement of the voting system. Potential grant funded in amount of $169,000 with a match from the clerk recorder's assessor's budget in the amount of $169,000. All right, what is your question, Kate?
Actually, it's a comment.
For comment?
I could do it as a question if you like. The agreement, I get why there's the agreement. My, my problem is it's vague. It doesn't, it says the amount that will reimburse us. There's no specific models of machines that we're required to purchase. There's no list to choose from. So if we don't choose from a list that's okay by the state and we don't get reimbursed, then there's a little bit, it just seems a little ambiguous. Ambiguous, that's not the right word. I'm going to do the right word. But I want to make sure, I'm guessing we will get a machine that the state approves. But before this is all said and done, I would like the public to be able to see what we end up spending on this, because this shows what the state will match, but not what we'll spend, and maintenance agreements and, and those little items that come up later, because I don't think the state's going to be matching that.
Thank you. All right, that was your comment.
I guess the question is, when the purchase comes in the future, does the board look at it again? Do you actually pick what you're doing?
Channel 8, clerk recorder assessor. Yes, when we do decide on a system that we are purchasing that would be certified by the Secretary of State, a contract would come in front of this board.
So at that time, the public has the right to know what we're purchasing.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from board members? No? Public? All right, seeing that, thank you very much. Entertain a motion?
I would accept 2.18.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so moved, thank you. Item 2.26. Approve a memorandum of agreement with the city of Mount Shasta Police Department pertaining to assistance under law enforcement mutual aid plan for car fire and authorize sheriff to sign the agreement. Unknown fiscal impact.
Kate Grace from Loweston. I was hoping the sheriff would be here today. As someone who was evacuated from Loweston during the car fire, the Mount Shasta police were harassing people. I get that they're looking for, you know, when you evacuate, they're looking for vandals and thieves and such. But after you've been there for five days, it should be obvious that you've lived there. And my husband was there for 10 days, and it got to the point, he was worried about going down to get the eggs because they were so harassed by the Mount Shasta Police Department. So I'm wondering what they're going to be paid for. I'm guessing it's their time, but I would suggest to the sheriff that in the future that you either have a chat with these people when they come up here, because we didn't have local deputies patrolling, and actually, the local deputies were really good and helpful. The ones that came in that were going to have no responsibility to the people here were rude and threatening, and I would like them to get the least amount of money possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Any other questions, comments on this item? Members of the public? All right, we'll entertain...
I guess I will ask a question. Was, was the city of Mount Shasta the only department that we brought in? I thought there was, there's people from all over.
And Siskiyou County, Nevada.
And did we already have MOUs with them?
They're coming before the board next meeting.
All right. All right, that's all I have.
All right.
Will you entertain a motion?
I would.
To approve as presented.
Thank you, Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved, thank you. All right, we have a town public hearing, which we cannot start right yet, so we will move on to reports. Any report from a department have wishes to inform the board on anything?
Please.
There, all right. Our, CIO Coons?
Nothing to report.
All right.
So you want me to reiterate that we have our groundbreaking today at 11:00. We'd like everybody to show up. It should be a nice event. There are people coming from all over the state to attend.
Maybe I do have a department that's coming up. I do? All right. Good morning, Rick. Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, Caltrans wanted to drag me out front.
I'm sure they were giving us more money, right?
That's what we were working on. I have two things today. I heard the CIO mentioning the jail. We did get some good news yesterday. I'm not sure if we mentioned it, but we have the official, you can begin and spend money, state money from the state. So we, it's everything we were working up to yesterday. They turned on the spigot and said move forward, so we actually have all the approvals that we need. I just wanted to real quick, let everybody know that the EIR for Canvas program has been released. We have hard copies, and this, we're sending out a notice to everybody so that they are aware of it, but just to announce it publicly. We have hard copies at the Bayport Library, Trinity Center Library, Weaverville Public Library, Will Creek Public Library, DOT, Plan Department, and C, I believe there's one in the CIO's office too. And we're working on trying to get one down in Ruth Lake so that the folks down south can have one.
Rick, can I, can people purchase the CD or...
Yeah, just, $50. Yeah, just, $50 to purchase the manual with the CD. It's $10 to purchase just the CD. And that's going to reproduction cost. This thing costs $49.50 actually to make, so that's why we have to charge a little bit. We will be holding five public meetings at locations, I believe they've all been determined, but I don't have them here right now. But on June 19th here in Weaverville, in the evening, we'll be having a meeting. June 20th in Burnt Ranch, we'll be having a meeting, I believe it's at the new gym. On the 21st, most likely at the Ogde Federal Center and Trinity Center, we'll be having a meeting. And then we have a meeting slated for Saturday, June 22nd, in Hayfork and in Mad River. So we'll be doing a, essentially getting out to the public and do its own, try to hit everybody up. Comments are due back into planning by July 12th, close of business. And those would be, you can continue to submit comments, but if you want them to be officially replied to, you'd have to submit by that date. After that, it's just, it's essentially information. But in an EIR, we have to respond to any comments that we receive by that date.
Supervisor Chandler, can you get a question?
Yes, Kate, I, thank you very much. Clarification, at the libraries is where they can purchase it, or at the library can they check it out?
I, that's a good question. I think you have to read it at the library. It's not checkoutable. Have to read it at the library, but at the same time, what I believe is if someone wants a copy at the library, say the Hayfork Library, they can let the librarian know. And then I'll pass on the word that they'll send us an email and we'll enter office, copy or mail copy to the folks if we give a check and email back to our department. But there's probably things we can arrange so that they don't have to come over later and we can get a copy.
Okay, so for the people in Weaverville that are working here, is there a place to purchase it?
Just down the DOT or planning.
Okay, thank you.
A suggestion with the Hayfork Library, if you can give the librarian or whoever's working the desk down there possibly your information, and they can hand that out to the people who wish to get it, instead of relying on the librarian to contact your office.
Okay.
Understand that? Thank you.
All right, supervisor.
I also want to point out that this is available online.
Yes, yes, thank you. Both at DOT, on the DOT page and on the planning page. So there's links to come on Weaveven. I haven't checked the Weaveven on the blog, onto the county website, but it comes up as one of the first places.
Okay. Thank you, Rick. If anyone has questions, you can...
Rick, I do have some questions for you. So, just so the people and everybody understands the process, you're gonna have these meetings that are just public meetings, there won't be any commissioners or supervisors, they're just public meetings, correct?
Mm-hmm. You might have a, either a commissioner or boardman who may be attending, but they can't answer questions or be involved, they can come to listen.
So then, you take that information, you'll make comments back to people that have questions?
Yes, they provide written comments to assess the meeting. The meeting's meant to be informational, but the, in order to correctly document the process, we have to have written comments in order to be the comments that we respond to.
So at that point, once the comments are done and you feel there are changes made or no change is made, and then at that point, it goes to the planning commission?
Correct.
For public hearing?
Yes. And it's usually about a month after we close the comment period down to give the consultant time to compile everything and then comment back, either revise, make revisions to the draft EIR, or commenting back as to how it was addressed in the EIR, as it is.
So the planning commission will make a recommendation or an alternative, no alternative, make changes, whatever they're gonna do.
Yes.
And then, once they make that recommendation, it will come to the board.
Correct.
And the board, can the board at that point make changes?
Yes.
And then we accept it or don't accept it, or whatever.
Yes, if you make substantial changes, of course, it will be referred back to the planning commission. But, yes, it's, once the planning commission's done, then the board is the ultimate decision-making body, because there's some overriding considerations.
So I have a couple of comments. I think, just to have it on your radar, if you could schedule, when it goes, before the planning commission, have it scheduled for two days back-to-back, in case they need an extra night.
Yes.
They may not need it, but it's there if they do. And then if, you know, I've gone through my second read of the document, if there's some minor errors, are we as a board member should let you know, or during the time, if there's other errors, but there's some like really minor ones that...
Yeah, I would be most appropriate that they be addressed in writing.
Okay.
So that way, then, then the interaction is, part of the important, this is to have a good public record. And so if we were to make any changes or anything, we want to have it on record as to what you're...
So when it comes before the board, we would adopt advantage to those minor changes or whatever change at the board level? How would you like this?
Yeah, usually be directed, and I kind of refer to county council a little bit on this, but it would be part of the final board resolution with adopting the EIR with these minor modifications.
Talking about typos and that sort of thing?
Yeah, just some way.
So it's kind of editorial, it won't be doing any harm, and I didn't know earlier...
There's editorial and then there's procedural and some stuff.
That would be more of the board's...
Okay, but the editorial, I mean the minor...
The typos and that sort of thing.
And kind of not understanding some of the geography and that kind of stuff. How would you, what would you prefer?
I agree it should be in writing if you have any input about how they're approaching it. So you don't have to go back to the drawing board, but it should be in writing for public transparency purposes.
Or I could submit comments to you, you can tell me which is the best path?
Sure.
To go, to the board or to him? Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks so much, Rick. Quick question?
I just wanted to know where we can find the time and location of these meetings? Like, is it posted on the county department website?
There's cards that are sent out that would have the exact location of meeting and the times that the meetings are. I just didn't have it, but looking...
There's six.
Cards sent out to whom, where, when?
They've been mailed to most box holders?
Everybody in the county.
And the planning website would have this information, too, Rick?
Yes, yes. And we've also passed it on in the paper and will be publicly noticed.
Okay. Supervisor...
Right, Tom, you might also want to, once you get the information, let people know at your board meeting on Saturday. It is on a Saturday and I, Bobby and I asked for Saturday meetings for Hayfork and Southern Trinity to make it more convenient.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, I think, do we get you covered, supervisor? Supervisor Coons? CIO Coons?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Supervisor Brown, out of county travel?
I don't believe so.
All right.
Too quick for you, no out of county travel enough in the report.
All right.
Hiding me.
Supervisor...
As you know, to the governor through CSAC, or CSAC put on a meeting, the governor was in attendance yesterday about disaster in the state, and counties and cities, municipalities trying to pull together to find the best path forward to work on disasters together and come up with ideas together, since we've had an increase in fires, but there's mudslides and earthquakes and all sorts of other issues that go on. So supervisors Morris and I were there yesterday for the day. I think my most positive thing that I came out of it is that we are now seeing cities in areas that in the past weren't very serious about wildfires, all of a sudden say, oh my God, there's wildfires. So I think there's some positive energy work that's gonna come out of this. And the governor seems to be committed to this, to teach the people that there is stuff that needs to be done.
All right.
Supervisor Chandler?
Yes, not out of county, but on May 21st, we had the LAFCO and it was a very productive meeting. On the 27th, we had, in Hayfork, the first annual Always Hayfork at the park. It was a new dedication of the flagpole. There's been a lot of improvements at the park and there have been bricks that bought by individuals and groups in order to remember and moralize the passing of dear ones to us. And there was a lot of youth and this was a really well-attended event and looking forward to more things. On the 27th, in Hayfork, the memorial service, it was an honor for me to be able to read the World War II names, which this year included my father. So it was a very special moment for me. Also in Hyam Palm, the memorial service was well-attended. On the 28th, EOC Declare 101 Training for the, under Ed Presley, at the emergency services. And then on the June 1st, the Mountain Cannabis Coalition, the second meeting for the countywide input from different growers on how to proceed. They're doing it, I was just an observer, and to hear the concerns and the needs and the hopes of many of our licensed farmers. That wraps it up.
All right. Supervisor Brown, you look like you might have forgotten something, though?
What?
Okay.
Just didn't want to overlook you. As Supervisor Brown's pointed out, we were in Sacramento for the disaster preparation meeting. Speaking of disaster, I want to thank, this is gonna sound, I didn't mean it to sound that way, but thank our staff at Health and Human Services, OES, and Sheriff Saxon and the Weaverville Fire Department and Cal Fire, as I hosted a disaster prep meeting in Weaverville, just how do you get your family and pets prepared ahead of time? Reduce some risk on your own, in your own world, to, in case of snow, fire, power outages, whatever. So wanted, I don't think anyone is here from those departments, but thank you very much. All right, moving, Behaver Health was not there, but Connie, I know you were there in spirit. Okay, moving on to, oops, not 10 o'clock yet, so how about we move on to county matters?
It's 1:30.
I'm just...
At-hoc committees.
Yeah, sorry. Because, moving on to ad hoc committees, commercial cannabis ordinance amendments, as reported many times, at the moment, we are in a standstill till this EIR gets finished. That's it? That's it. Federal lands legislation?
No new updates, tentative meeting with trial versus...
Okay.
We did meet as a ad hoc committee, a good meeting together discussing all issues.
Okay. Retain cannabis, ad hoc.
We have our last scoping session in Burnt Ranch at the elementary school. The advertisement will come out, I believe, tomorrow for it. And we'll have flyers up shortly on June 11th, from 5 to 7. It'll be abbreviated, not as long as some of our other sessions. And was there anything else? That's it?
Okay, thank you. What's the date on that? June?
Yes.
Got it. All right. All right, moving on to, have I missed anything? Tina keeps looking at me. We'll move on to county matters until we hit 10 o'clock. Authorize the, item 6.1, authorize a human resource director to transfer 17 years of applicable longevity from prior employers to Trinity County.
You just said it 1:30.
Oh, I can't, oh, you're right. You are correct, thank you. Normally, because this is kind of a...
It's a scheduled session.
Yeah.
That's a workday.
Yeah, you never know. Okay. So we will take a break until 10 a.m. Thank you for getting to that. You're right.
It's got 15 minutes.
Service can't move my truck, because she can't get in her. Lucky your roof was empty, now it's...
Oh, okay.
Actually, I can scoot it over. I can scoot it.
Because we were waiting until 10 o'clock.
It's a, it's a...
I knew she'd owe you that. And I laughed. Because she's so late.
You ready it down and you... I would put something in somewhere.
10 o'clock at our public hearing. Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing to consider taking action on protest regarding the number of units charged to residents or businesses for solid waste annual parcel fees. Potential reduction of revenues in the amount of $100 per unit, equivalent unit from the solid waste enterprise. So, board members, if you recall, we approved a resolution in February, if I remember that. Anything else you'd like to add? Diane?
This is the second public hearing in a sequence of three public hearings for our annual solid waste parcel fee. The bills were sent out in April and they were in accordance with the resolution schedule of fees that were set in the land use provisions in some of the units. And this particular hearing is for requesting that the number of units billed are adjusted. And we have received the one protest that is attached to this, that's the only one I know of.
So, since we have one new board member, so we can consider this protest letter and adopt as a portioning?
Yes, you can either approve or deny it. It's basically, it's been billed at four units and they're saying it's a single-family residence, although we don't see that one, we're looking at it.
Okay. So I'll open it up to anyone else in public comment and then we can discuss this after that proper... Okay.
Kate Graves from Lowston, I just would like to once again say that these used to be done instead of parcel numbers. It was a people's name, because people know their names, they don't know their parcel numbers. And I would like it to go back to people's names, so they're aware if, or whatever reason they didn't get the notice, if they see this, they know it was them. And the same with all, all items like this, where you use the parcel number and not the person's name. That needs to be changed back, because there are people that get skipped over in this, because they don't know their parcel number. And I know you looked at me funny when I said it used to be the name, but it was, and I would like it changed back.
Diane, you have something?
She can come back. Do you want to say something?
Well, my question to you is, is how do you, we are looking at somebody... Well, my question to you is, is how do you, we are looking at somebody that wrote us a letter, looking at the assessment, so how did he, how could he possibly get looked over?
No, I'm saying people that didn't know. So if, if you didn't get your notice, whether it didn't get to you in the mail or whatnot, I know there's people, I know them, that have been on these lists by parcel, and they didn't know till after the fact that they were on this for whatever reason. So if you put their names on it, and they see it on the agenda, or someone else sees on the agenda, and goes, "Hey Fred, you know, I saw your name on the list," that has happened in the past. And I'm just saying, it's just, it's not even a courtesy. I don't even know why it's changed from the name to the parcel. It doesn't, if it was a privacy issue, I don't think so. I'm just saying that more, it's, it's better public information for it to be the person's name and not the parcel number. So it doesn't apply to this specific complaint letter. It applies to people that could have complained, or if they, to confirm that they know it's them.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Supervisor Chapman?
Yeah. County Council, is there any reason that we're prohibited for providing the names, and could we just not simply do both?
Well, I mean, if you have to keep up with the actual ownership name versus the parcel number, it's a lot easier to just have the parcel number on there and have to get it this way.
Okay.
So practice issues.
Okay. And I do have another question for Diane. I'm assuming you know who this person is, because I can't read the writing. And in their complaint letter, they brought up, I think, some fallacies, Wildwood?
When you're in default.
Yeah. So have...
Supervisor Chapman?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hold it for one second? I just want to see if there was anyone else left in the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you were going down that path. Okay. Anybody else from the public? Nope? All right. So now, go ahead. Okay, thank you. So, I'm assuming that this person is in my district, and they haven't contacted me, so I don't want to make that assumption, and I can't tell who wrote it. But there are some incorrect things that they're under the assumption. And I realize that the transfer sites are a bit aways for a lot of people, and if someone chooses to go out of county. My only thought would be that if they're a single residence, I'm not sure about why they get in charge for four residents, and I don't know if they understand what they're talking about, because the inconsistencies of the other things were so wrong. So, has this person talked to you at all, or?
I intend on writing an explanation letter back to them to explain, like, the system that's not in place anymore at Wildwood, since we lost the Wildwood store there, because that one, there's no longer bins there. And the transfer sites basically, we provide the service and the health, so keep track of the landfill is what the fees go toward, the band spectrum. They get saved the tipping fee that they wouldn't pay for disposing here if they're disposing somewhere else. And, I'm sorry, what else?
Well, I just, it seems like they're under some incorrect knowledge, and I'm wondering if also the knowledge that they believe that they're being charged for four, if that's inconsistent as well as with the reality, so.
It's something, normally, we say they need to take that up at the assessor's office, because we download our records from there, and it says that they have multiple units, and it's four. And that's sort of, we go and we look at a parcel map to see if there's something that's missing in that, but it, on this one, we looked, and it looks like it agrees. It looks like there's a missing list in for that parcel.
So, so there's a remedy for her?
For them.
Okay. So there's a remedy. There is a solution. So, thank you. I appreciate that.
The name is on the letter, though. It's at the very top left-hand corner of that page.
Oh, Cody Oliver. Yes, I've had that happen, some of my constituents, where they didn't correct it at the assessor's office, and it just, and then they're complaining to you, so we've had to make sure.
And they don't understand usually that if it happens every year the same way, if they don't fix it, then yes, they'll have to address it the same again.
And I see in your, in the board report, that you're denying a request from this person, Mr. Oliver. So, all right, with that, what is the board's pleasure?
I have a question for you, Council. So, Council, the burden of proof in this situation, is it on the county to prove, or is it on the applicant to, because they, I can't even find a parcel number left, or?
You mean, if you're challenging an individual assessment?
Yeah.
It would be, it depends on what type of property it is, but it's, once these fees are, I think they're already adopted in your home, so to go with them, they would have to go through, and they would have to show.
So it's, they should have been here and say, "Here's the picture of my place, I don't have four buildings."
Well, for this type of public hearing, you're really talking about the adoption of the fees themselves, not about individual claims? It's, it's to me more of an individual complaint about how the fees are being assessed based on them, this, the property, in other words, from them.
Okay, so that's why.
Because it's being split into four parcels versus, so at that point, this could be considered a protest, which is in the context of that, but this is, for purposes of this today, it's really considered a protest.
So this person is just protesting a program because he gets overcharged?
That's how I read it.
Okay. Is that what we're doing? Okay.
And the determination to be made at this meeting is if the number of units is correct, or if you would like to change the number of units to somewhere.
For his particular piece?
Yes. Right. That's right. I thought it caught your eye, even without.
But again, then the burden of proof is on him to, we, we've assessed it, and we've looked and said there's four, but the burden of proof would be on, to hand it, hey, three of them burned down.
To explain why the application.
And so, it doesn't, I don't see any information.
And, and the staff is denying that request. And, so this person could go to the assessor's office, change the appropriate, and then come back to you with the appropriate correction.
Yes.
Okay. So there's still some options.
There's a voting.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you for holding the public hearing.
All right. Any other questions? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and I think we are in need of a motion for this. You decided not to?
You don't need a motion.
Okay.
We still have one more public hearing as well.
No? This is it?
Okay. So at this point, no, actually, at this point, you do, I'm sorry, I thought there was an interesting one, you'd need to accept or deny, or you can consider it and come back and make a decision.
So the motion would be one of the two of this request, accept or deny.
And there's only one request?
Correct.
I move, sorry, go ahead, keep.
I may to deny the request.
And I'll second that.
All right. Just a roll call. Is this a roll call, Amanda?
Yes. Supervisor Taylor?
Yes.
Supervisor Gross?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chapman?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. All right. Thank you, Diane. Okay, thank you. I think so. I first doubted myself. All right, so with that, can we break now until, let's start moving over, since we're kind of, we're in a limbo?
Yeah, we have to, because it's...
I think it is for session.
It's one for session, yeah.
Yeah, I just would rather, I would rather just, you have, there's, who knows what we might have to do with that. So I'd better leave early if we can.
Sharpen those shovel blades.
That's true. All right, so we will reconvene back here, while we're going to go to the groundbreaking for the new jail, which is, starts at 11:00, and then we will return back here at 1:30 to finish up the quick county matters.
Everybody's welcome.
Yeah, everybody is welcome.
When you go ahead.
All right, thank you, Supervisor Flynn. So, to be clear, we're going to move on to 5.1. This is just, as I mentioned, the new jail ceremony, ceremonial groundbreaking at 11:00, located at 701 Tom Bell Road, Weaverville, California 96093. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I think we're ready. Well, thank you, everybody, for showing up for this exciting event, the beginning of, well, the middle, I guess it is. We received the grant years ago, got everything in place, and now it's time to start construction. So, before we start, I'd like to introduce some of the people we have in the audience and up here, who will be speaking a little bit. We're going to start out with Thomas Wetzel, the district rep for Senator McGuire. Will you stand up or wave, whatever you want to do? We have Aaron Dunn, Semin Woods. We also have Kim...
Mao.
Mao, sorry, from BSS, BSCC. We have, we don't have Elizabeth. We have Dan Eden from, from Sletton Construction, or Corrections, whichever you prefer. We also have Maynard Feist from Leonakis. That's who we're messing up here. Maynard's going to speak. And, is Jeffrey Smith here?
Hi.
Jeffrey Smith. We also have some people in the audience I would like to introduce, starting, also our board chair, Judy Morris. Also in the audience, we have vice chair, Bobby Chadwick. We have Keith Groves, supervisor from District One. We have Jeremy Brown, supervisor, District Four, and John Finley, supervisor, District Five. Also looking around the audience, I think we had a couple judges. We have Judge Herford and Judge Harper, thank you for attending, and I thought I saw Donna out there somewhere, too. Yes, our DA. So, what I'm going to do is turn the mic over, and to, I'm going to start out, I guess, with Judy Morris, our chair, and keep this thing moving. Thank you.
Don't go away. Okay. Not mine either. Wow. Good morning, everyone. It's still morning. This is a big day for Trinity County. On behalf of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, county staff, and overall county welcome, it is such a big day for us. It's been a long road to this groundbreaking. Many members of Trinity County staff, state agencies, and others have worked many years to get us to this point in the process. In particular, I want to thank some past boards, in particular Supervisor Judy Fluger, who represented District One, who worked many years trying to find funding to build this jail. Also, I'd like to thank previous CAO Wendy Tyler, who also had many years put into trying to find funding for this, this, this build, and also the initial application for this most recent funding. She has sent me a few words to wish all of us some congratulations, and I will read them shortly to you. I also would like to thank current Director of Transportation Planning and Building, Rick Tippett, who continues to run point on this project, and he and his staff deserve our thanks in getting this project moving forward to where we are today, and there's still more work ahead. Right, right? I think it's important to remember that this facility is many, many of the tools in our collective toolkit when it comes to both keeping our community safe and healthy. Incarceration is only one of the many decisions available upon us in dealing with the many issues facing our community, and we should not forget the other options available, including mental health services, education resources, health and human services as well. Just last week, I was talking to Sheriff Saxon, who mentioned to me, he was really looking forward to this extra room and the room for the legislative demand of programming. And what that means is some other options available for those incarcerated. And hopefully, those options would not, would help them not to return back to our jail. One in five people suffer from a reading disability or dyslexia. Challenging their ability not only to read the written word, but also many times challenges their ability to function in society. We need to continue to work locally, regionally, statewide with our partners in the education fields to address basic literacy and other challenges to ensure that we're able to reduce the need for expansion of incarceration. Mental health and its inherent challenges present similar opportunities if we devote the necessary resources in a strategic way. When we do make the final decision of incarceration in Trinity County, we will now have a safer place for our staff and those in the transition of processing and, and housing in our new jail. We are within the piece of our law enforcement process. At that point, I'm grateful to have a partner, and as is the board, and Sheriff Tim Saxon, that understands all these possibilities and can see the opportunities in both programming that this new facility will accommodate in addition to other options available. The construction of this facility, combined with some system-wide collaboration and collective leadership of all of us in the community, can help improve our county and move us forward to years to come. And if you would give me a few seconds, I'd like to read some words from our former CAO Wendy Tyler, who also, as I mentioned, had worked many years on trying to bring this to a reality. Trinity County family, getting this, getting this to this momental point has been a huge task for the county. It was a long, tedious process that took a couple of attempts, required resources, and we were, that were hard to come by, but through discipline and trust, you are all finally here. This new detention facility will allow you to fully embrace the intent of AB 109, while providing the incredible staff of the sheriff department with a safe and efficient workplace. Congratulations, Trinity, you have earned a well-deserved building. Best wishes for a project to finish on time and within budget, speaking like a CAO. So, with that, I will turn the floor over to...
Turn it over to me.
I'm going to turn it over to our CAO, Dr. Coons. And again, congratulations, everyone. You've all put so much work into this. Thank you.
Thanks, Supervisor Morris. And now we're going to be hearing from Rick Tippett, our Director of DOT and Planning.
Well, before the meeting, I asked Darryl a little bit of history about jails and what was going on with the sheriff from Weaverville. He had brought with him the pioneer days of California. And one of the interesting stories was about a doctor, a doctor where, who had, was a dentist from New Jersey. He was a lousy miner, but he was a little smart and speculating on water, and he grabbed up all the water rights in town. Well, the miners didn't really like it, and they wanted half the water rights, and he wouldn't give it to them. So their idea was to go and bust a bunch of holes in his water system and drain all down there. Well, Sheriff Lowell, at the time, didn't like that, and he decided to gather up all the hooters and take them down to the jail downtown and hook them in. And at that time, he had a holding cell that was 20 by 18. And some of the other miners found out about it, so they all came down and said, "Well, if you're going to arrest them, you got to arrest me." And so before he knew it, Sheriff Lowell had 125 people that wanted to be arrested in jail. Interesting, when this is a 72-bed jail here, and that was 150 years ago. So anyways, sheriff locked them up in there, shut the door, and then he realized none of them could breathe, so he let them out, and they all went over to the courthouse, and they hung out there, thought it was a lot more comfortable, but then it came time to feed them. And again, you know, it's a kind of irony, 150 years later, even kitchens and, and, you know, the support facilities were very important in this jail. But it came time to feed them, and none of the restaurants here could make enough food, and also the county didn't have enough money, because it was a dollar mill, and they didn't have enough money to support that dinner, because the county didn't have money, and so they were going to use script, and it was 50 cents on the dollar. And the sheriff said, "I don't have money for this," and so he let them all go. But it's just kind of an interesting story from back then that kind of fits into what we have going on here. As you know, this 72-bed jail, it's going to have day, day rooms that have further education and activities during the day, a medical section, a new intake, a lot of things that make the jail safer for the employees that are going here. Very interesting projects, as I worked through it, being I've never done, gone through a jail. There was a lot of interesting things that came up about whether the lock faces this way, or that way, or where the door swings, but we got there. But there is one thing I want to point out, there's also things that this jail brings that are for the community, that are going to make a difference to all of us. And one of those things is, is that we're going to be putting in a new water line that's going to connect around the north part of the airport. And what that does is that strengthens the water system for Weaverville in general, so that we have two ways of water coming into town. so that we have two ways of water coming into town rather than just one from the north. And so, if we have a problem on one line, we have a way to bring water around from another way and get water delivery to here. And that's an important line, because it's gravity-fed, so it really helps out the community. And the other is, is that we're gonna be building a left-turn lane pocket at Tom Bell Road down there, and if anybody goes to the dump, you know how hard it is when you're dragging a trailer, and you gotta make a left turn there, and you got a bunch of cars behind you. Now, you gotta save places to pull in, people to get around you. And so, those are the things that were products of this jail, and that are gonna happen. And last, the one thing I wanna say is I appreciate the board's commitment. There's been a lot of things that have come up that required the board to, to help us get to where we are today, and they've always been willing to step up and, and provide that assistance to get us where we need to be.
Thank you, Rick. And now, we'll hear from Kim Mal from BSCC.
My name is Kimberly Mal. I'm a field representative with the Board of State and Community Corrections, and on behalf of the BSCC, I would like to congratulate your county and all of your partners on this project. This endeavor began many years ago when you were applied and awarded state funds through Senate Bill 863. It was a very competitive process that without the collaborative efforts from your county and your stakeholders would not have been possible. This is very exciting, and the BSCC is thrilled to be partnering with you in navigating this project. So again, thank you for inviting me here today, and congratulations.
I think we'd like to hear now from Dan Eden from Sletton Construction.
I don't have any notes. Just wanna say, appreciate this opportunity to, to work with Trinity County, the sheriffs, lenders, judicial management, and Leonakis. This, this project's pretty unique for us, as we typically see a lot of renovation-type work in, in these facilities we do. This one's gonna be a pretty clean project, all, all new out here. Guys are happy about that, so it should be a pretty, pretty great project for us. So, again, look forward to a successful project. The two names coming, we're Sletton Construction. This job's gonna be constructed by our Corrections Division. That's the two names that are in there. To date, I've been with these guys for about 17, 18 years, and we haven't had a project come in past the scheduled timeline. So, Wendy, I think it was, let her know. So, hopefully, hopefully, yeah, well, we haven't had, we haven't had one of those either, but there's a lot of variables to that. So, but, so we look forward to, to successful project work that everybody had. Happy to be here. So, thank you.
And now, the manager's gonna be responsible for maintaining and security of our facility.
Thank you, Richard. Hey, good morning. You know, the Office of Trinity County Sheriff was established in 1851, and between then and now, I think public perceptions of incarceration have changed, wouldn't you agree? Things that they did back in, throw them all into one room, basically, until you could decide you couldn't feed them. We can't do that anymore. Our current jail was designed and constructed in 1976 to hold 24 inmates. In 1991, there was a project to expand that and the increased capacity to 53 beds. For 28 years, our jail has operated with just minimal improvements and upgrades. The current jail's about 21,000 square feet, and the new detention facility will be about 27,000 square feet and have 72 beds. Now, that 48 are medium security, 16 maximum security, and eight for special use. As mentioned, there'll be a new medical treatment area and a new programming space to expand training, intervention, and counseling to the inmates. And we're also exploring a partnership with Shasta College for them to come in, provide educational and vocational classes. I'm looking forward to having a new state-of-the-art facility that will enhance the safety of our correctional deputies as well as the inmates. My staff and I are extremely happy of the support from the Board of Supervisors to pursue this project over many years. I'm looking forward to working closely with everyone involved in construction to help keep it on time and on track and on budget. And we're confident that this new detention facility will serve the needs of Trinity County for many, many years to come. Thank you.
And we're honored to have Representative from Senator McGuire's office, Thomas Wetzel.
That's okay, I'm gonna stand up. It's okay. Raise this up a little bit. Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Thomas Wetzel. I am Senator Mike McGuire's district representative for Trinity, Humboldt, and Delnor Counties, and I'm pleased and honored to be joined by Erin Dunn, who represents Assemblymember Woods in those same counties as well. Both of our representatives hate that they can't be here today. Obviously, it's a busy time during the legislation, but they were extremely anxious to send us in their place. So, I am here today to present a California State Resolution. For those of you that don't know, that is, a reso is one of the highest honors that can be given to any organization, individual, or event in the state of California. And today, we are witnessing a project that really, truly warrants that recognition. By baking ground on the new Trinity County Sheriff's Detention Facility, we are witnessing firsthand the culmination of years of hard work, countless hours, and a couple of gray haters here, here and there, too, and just the great efforts of all those people involved. This brand-new 27,000-foot facility will be of a huge aid to the ongoing work of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office. A big recognition to the county of Trinity, Sheriff Tim Saxon, Rick Tippett, Richard Coons, and everybody else who is involved in this project. Trinity County is extremely blessed to have people that are not afraid to wear multiple hats to get projects done, and you guys really do have an all-star team out here working for you. So, I know that you guys didn't come here to hear me speak. You wanna see some shovels hit dirt. So, I will simply say that on behalf of Senator McGuire, Assemblymember Wood, myself, Erin Dunn, and the California Legislature, I am proud and honored to present Trinity County with this California State Resolution.
Well, before we present that, on behalf of Assemblymember Wood, I bring you congratulations on a project that is the epitome of determination and the stick-to-it-ness that I've come to learn is Trinity County. It also has to be the most beautiful setting for a detention center that I, I think that is absolutely possible. And so, congratulations so much on this groundbreaking today.
Thank you both. Thank you. And please thank your bosses. I know you've been there doing a lot of phone calls from all of us, so.
Can you smile it one more? Are you, are you getting ready to read the resolution?
Please, Supervisor Finley.
Yeah. Well, that concludes our presentations and speeches, so now, we're gonna get to the fun part. We're gonna start, we're gonna get to groundbreaking. So, I guess the folks that are gonna be involved in groundbreaking, put on your hats and grab a shovel.
Do you want us in this particular one? Do you need another one for good measure? In case we're gonna have our eyes closed? All right. What's that? Next?
Looks like we're building the whole thing. Come on. I need scratching those. Oh, yeah. Representative. Who hasn't looked at the picture yet? Okay, thank you very much for showing up. We have some refreshments over here if you want to stick around. Have a wonderful day.
We will thank you, everyone, for a little different schedule today. It was a great groundbreaking. Sheriff's not here. We have a resolution I'd like to read, but it hasn't arrived. So, we may have to do it next meeting, and, CAO Coons, it was assumed when we did this groundbreaking, but I wanted to make sure we were also thanking you. You came in kind of the tail end, but some important things had to get done, so thank you for getting us to where we're at today, breaking that ground, and now it's all in the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, boy. What's it going on back there?
Okay, moving on to item 6.1, authorize the Human Resources Director to transfer 17 years applicable longevity from prior employers to Trinity County for the Director of Building and Planning Candidate Number 6962, in pursuit to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.270B2 and 2.60.410A. Authorize the County Administrative Officer to hire a Director of Planning, our Building and Planning, at a range of D040, Step G, effective June 4, 2019. Approximately cost of salary and benefits for a Director of Building and Planning at A Step is $11,364, at E Step is $13,591, and at G Step is $14,878. Okay. Who's taking this? Richard?
I wanted to start with the, I could, I could talk about the individual.
Okay, great, okay. Thank you.
Shawna Nelson, HR Director. So, this is a reminder of the expansion of the candidates department. It has become necessary that we combine Building, Planning, Candidates, and Environmental Health Departments and remove them from the Direction of Transportation and hire a dedicated department head. We have recently recruited, we interviewed for the position of Director of Building and Planning, and the applicant that presented as the best candidate for the position would bring both the departments and the county, I think, the greatest benefit in terms of meeting our long-term strategic planning goals. The candidate has worked for over 17 years in local-level land use planning, resource management work, and the majority of those years are both administrative and supervisory capacity. This candidate's 14 years of direct experience working with Northern California rural counties. So, what we're asking, it's had three section requests, but one is to provide CAO Dr. Coons the authority to hire a Director of Planning and Building, and then to provide authority to Human Resources Director to hire a glad A Step and to transfer their 17 years of applicable longevity from their prior captive employers, so that we could hire a net step.
Yeah, as Shawna said, we, we had the three applicants interviewed, and this applicant's definitely had the skill for looking for and the, and the years of experience we're looking for. But as you know, it's, it's difficult at times to bring people to Trinity County because of the cost. But at this step, it makes us very competitive, and they accepted that, that position, we negotiated back and forth for a little while. But at this step, they accepted the position and would start the first week of July if we had, if we come to agreement or, or let's prove to, to make the offer. Of course, we do a background, but to tend to background, I would try first week start.
Okay. Question, Board member?
No.
Well?
Congratulations.
All right.
It's a one-year review. See, this is congratulations.
The interview committee was...
Was recognized, because we had a planning commissioner on there, but they weren't able to make this, so it didn't recognize the interview process.
Okay. Any questions from the public on the side? No? Okay, seeing none. Well, wait. Our Director of Trans, are you sure you want this to happen?
Oh, I, I was holding my stuff back. I just wanted you to have it happen as fast.
Just thought I'd check.
So, Rick, would you like, would you like a motion? Would you entertain a motion, like to make a motion?
For sure.
Regarding 6.1, to authorize the Human Resources Director to transfer 17 years applicable longevity from the prior employees to Trinity County for the Director of Building and Planning Candidate Number 6962, and pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.270B2, and 2... yeah, sorry. 2.60.410A, authorize the County Administrative Officer to hire a Director of Building and Planning at the range D040, Step G, just to be real specific.
I'm glad we had a second. Well done, Supervisors. Thank you, CAO Coons and Shawna. Now, this has been a project, so thank you very much. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none, so moved. Thank you all. Amanda?
I saw you just kinda float up out of your...
And Rick, thank you. Thank you.
Now, this is what we need done in the next month.
Exactly. It's not quite over. Okay, moving on to 6.2, modify the departmental allocation list for Health and Human Service Department to read 10, Administrative Clerk 1/2, or Administrative Clerk, Senior or Administrative Coordinator 1/2, or Vocational Trainee, or Vocational Assistant effective June 4, 2019. No impact to the general fund, these allocations remain within the Welfare Department.
So, the proposed change would not be adding or changing anything to the allocation that you know is. The current allocation structure, it actually does not provide for potential growth of the Vocational Trainee and the Vocational Assistant. So, by implementing this change, you would allow growth, opportunity, more effective succession planning within the department, more flexibility for the staff. It does create a better career ladder for those practitioners.
Okay. Questions, members of the public? All right, seeing none.
I'm going to accept 6.2 as presented.
All right, thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Thank you, Shawna. And wrapping up the big item of the day.
Shouldn't we've done this one before?
I know, right?
Before we started.
All right, item 6.3, under Transportation, approve an agreement with Lenders Construction Service, LLC, of your reach out to provide construction support services during the construction of the new Trinity County Sheriff Detention Facility, up to $1.257,466 from the jail construction fund.
A couple months ago, we put out a RFP for construction support services for the jail, and we did not... And we did not... We pulled it out there for three, four, or five weeks. We did not receive anybody... Received any responses back. We had interested people, but when they started lining up their staff, they found that it was going to be difficult. Most of the interest candidates came out of Sacramento. And so I found myself without a consultant with the jail project coming up. So I had to go actively solicit services from some of the local folks. One of the ones that came highly recommended was Jess Smith with Lenders Services. They are currently working on the jail in Humboldt County. And he's worked on a couple other correction facilities. And one of the things that I liked was they had the local aspect of being out of Eureka. Actually, some of the staff that he ended up putting together was a combination out already of Eureka. So it gave our project, I'll call it a little bit more regional flair than it had if I had had someone out of Sacramento. So we did go into discussion. I asked them to prepare a proposal. We negotiated the proposal and came up with a contract lump sum value of $12,500, or $1,257,466 to do inspection, beginning and ending with 300, 530 working days scheduled. One thing, though, that we do have, as I was looking at this contract over, is we started out with a budget of this line item at $700,000. And again, I... Budget was prepared, not by the guy at the time, but it was prepared by the sheriff when he initially... Sheriff Hanging when he was initially preparing this. And while they make good effort a lot of times, the construction inspections can sometimes be underestimated. And construction inspection, I think, are one of the most important things that you can have out on site. Because they're the guys that essentially make sure you get what you're paying for. They're the ones that verify the plans and they document everything that takes place out there. And then if there's a conflict that arises out of what proceeds in the way to meet the plans, they're the ones that help you resolve it. Essentially, they're saving a lot of time from me and especially providing staff that we currently do not have on capacity. Because we, quite candidly, don't build jails every day. So when we saw... When I saw that $700,000, knowing that we're still looking at other avenues of getting a little bit more funds, I limited the contract now to $700,000. But I intend on going out and finding a way to secure remaining funding to different sources that we've been looking at. And I'll return at that time when you have that source identified. But for now, I just want to get them going so that we have someone under contract for the remain this year and a little bit next year. With that, I can ask you a question.
So if I'm hearing you right, Rick, there's $700,000 approximately that we're short. We're okaying it today, and then you're going to bring us back how you get that money at a later date?
Now, the contract is for $1.2 million.
Right.
But I put a limit in there in the contract to $700,000. And what I have to do is I have to identify the delta between $700,000 and $12,000, or $1.2 million. And so that's about $500,000 and something. And so when I've identified that, then I'll return to the board to request that you approve the remainder of the contract so that we can move forward to the end date.
So we're approving the whole thing now. When you bring that additional money back, it's not actually additional. It's folded into this.
When I identify... Right now, you're only giving me authority to spend up to $700,000.
Okay. I get that. But we have this other amount before us?
I have to find it.
Okay. So are we adjusting item 6.3 to reflect the real money or the projected money?
Now, you as the board have the right to put a... I'll call it a block in there. You have the overall contract, but you're saying, "We recognize that overall contract, but today we'll only give you authority to expend up to this much." So you're giving me expenditure authority, not for the full contract amount, but for about over half of it.
Okay. So that modifies actually what 6.2 says, just so you know. How it's written is that we're...
Yeah. Maybe it'd be easier to see if I tried to... Section 2 of the contract...
My computer is no longer functioning.
Okay, I'll give you a copy of it. Section 5, you'll see in there... Actually, I can't read the word for word, but you'll see in there...
Maximum cost to county notwithstanding any other provision of this contract, in no event will the cost to the county for the services to be provided here exceed the maximum sum of what we're looking at today. Including direct non-salary expenses, contramp is limited to a not-to-exceed amount of $700,000 until further direction from the county. And that's what I want clarification on. Because you have the $1.2 on the paperwork, but you have the $700 in the backup. But that's not what we're voting on. That's why I'm asking. If you look at what you can't look at... I hate her. So on... It doesn't give you a real big page number. Under C, "Contract is limited to a not-to-exceed amount of $700..." Yeah, all right, sorry.
Yeah, I understand that's what is in the backup. But what we're voting on is the $1.2 million.
Well, and I don't care if we put it in this or not, but what we're actually voting on is what's in the backup. We're approving the agreement. This is the description of the agreement, which if you would like to make a note of these $700,000 in the description.
Yes.
That's my opinion.
And I want to also point out, this one impact, I use the words "up to", not "specific".
So the agenda item just is sort of cost. The services is up to the contract that they're voting on today is $700,000.
Yeah, $700,000.
It should say "cost" up to.
I have to tell you off full exposure when we mention the name of the contract. That was what... That's what we have to have.
That concludes the question. Okay.
So the $1.2 includes if there is an issue. They're going to take on that issue, discrepancy or whatever, litigation?
Yes. The only provision in there would be if there's a delay in the contract that takes us past 530 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Any members on the public?
If I could, what I remember is if we go over those days, that then the contractor is in penalty and he actually has to pay us from the original contract.
Yes, it could be deducted out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any members of the public wish to speak to this issue?
No, it's a separate issue.
Is it related to this agenda item?
Not, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Okay. Before I hear a motion, thanks again, Rick, for helping on this big, big project over the last few years. And this is like the last little... Well, not the last piece, but before the next phase. All right, with that...
I motion to approve 6.3 as presented.
I'll second.
And a further discussion? Questions, Supervisor Chalik? Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't want to... I do, but I'll ask.
Okay.
Would you feel better if it was a little more clear as a motion?
It's fine.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second and a roll call, please. Supervisor Benning?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
Supervisor Chalik?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
All right. I think that concludes our regular agenda. Was there a specific issue you were looking to address?
Sort of.
Was it a certain agenda item?
Well, I don't know if it was on the agenda item, but it was about... It's about the waste disposal.
We've covered that item already.
But it wasn't exactly specific to that item. I was just wondering if I could make a request. It's actually written. Is it okay if I open the open public?
I'll make that open and open it up for public comment.
All right. So a motion and a second?
Aye.
All right. Now, all in favor of opening it back up to public comment? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right. Please step up and we'll take your comment.
Well, I just was passing by, going to the library, and I'd never been to a meeting before, but there is something I've been meaning to bring up. And I'm not sure who to address about it. But there's been a lot of concern in the community about non-CRV plastic. And it used to be accepted at the recycling center, but now they're not able to upkeep the maintenance for non-CRV. I'm not exactly sure. I think that the state is no longer accepting it, but I'm not certain on those facts. But I do know that I've had been driving my non-CRV plastic to Humboldt, to McKinleyville, where my boyfriend's parents live, and I take it to their dump there. And I was just wondering... I found out that the dump in Weaverville is privately owned. It's not... That's what they told me there, because I was going to file a complaint and they said it was privately owned and I couldn't... I don't know about those facts. They could have been... Maybe I misunderstood. But anyways, I was wondering if there would be a possibility that the dump could accept non-CRV plastic? Because I'm having to drive it like 70 miles to another county. And I'm like collecting like five trash bags at a time. But I don't know if I'm the only other person that's concerned about this environmental issue.
It's a big global issue, actually. And so our Solid Waste Director is aware of it. And I don't think there is an immediate solution in the next couple of months. We aren't real aware of it.
You are, okay.
And...
Why don't we just have Richard?
I was getting there.
Well, I just know that a lot... I've heard from a lot of other people that they're... It's creating a lot of, like, a lot more waste.
For sure.
And it could be recycled. And so I didn't know if there's... I mean, it sounds like you guys do have some control over some financial aspects of this county. And I don't know how much it would cost on the county to recycle plastic, if there would be like transportation costs or something. But it seems like an environmental issue that applies to a lot of people.
So after the meeting, I would suggest that you connect with our CAO Coons, which is right here. And he's actually the Department Head over Solid Waste.
Okay, so he's probably aware of this issue. But it seems like, you know... I don't know how long it's going to... How many years it would take to get just some like...
After the meeting, we'll have you two connect.
Okay, so is that all?
That's it?
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And I will direct you also to our Assemblymember, Representative Jim Wood. Erin is right there, and she probably would take your comments as well.
Well, I think I've shared my comments, in my opinion. And I just feel like it is kind of up to you guys to make a... To take action. Because the community members can't really make a change unless we want to carpool all of our non-CRV plastic to the coast. But it seems like, you know, that Trinity does have a garbage problem. People sort of collecting garbage. And the more recycling that people can do, the better. It's good for kids, too, to learn to recycle, I think.
And I... And please have a conversation with...
Okay, well, he's heard my opinions. I don't want to pioneer that revolution, but thanks for listening.
He may be able to give you more information offline, is what I'm saying, too.
Well, I feel like it's not in my power, but this is my opinion.
That's...
So I'm just sharing my opinion. Thanks for listening. I hope I wasn't offensive.
Oh, gosh, no. No, 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 no. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Too early, is it? Okay. I am going to close, probably, here. Thank you, board members. I am going to read the closed session item. Right, you're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to 7.1, Government Code Section 54364.5. Is that your daughter, Ed?
No.
Oh. Public Employee Evaluation County Administrative Officer is closed session. Okay. Thank you. Erin, thank you again. Good to see you.
Congratulations on this meeting.
Yep. So what do you resonate with? All right. Two report outs from two closed sessions. May 21st... I'm sorry, May 29th, the special meeting, direction was given. And for closed session today on June 4th, direction was given. Thank you, and meeting is adjourned.